Past. Appropriation Bill two thousand and eighteen. Council now becomes committee of the whole council to consider the appropriation bill two thousand and eighteen. In accordance with rule sixty eight of the rules of procedure, the committee will first consider the schedule. Members have been informed that there will be three sessions. There'll be a joint debate for the first session on the heads without amendment. The members have been informed after debate. The committee will put to vote that the sums for the heads without amendments stand part of the schedule. The committee will then proceed to the second session and there will be another debate to and all the amendments will put to a vote. Following that. The third session will begin which includes standing, the classes standing part of the bill. And the financial secretary can then proceed to the third reading. And the committee may indicate whether on the whole we support the bill unless until the third reading completes. I've consulted members on the arrangement, it is expected that the scrutiny of or the consideration of the bill will be completed by the tenth of May. In accordance with rule sixty eight of the rules of procedure, the committee will first consider the schedule. And I propose a question to you, that is that the sums for the following hats stand part of the schedule. Heads twenty-three to twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-two, forty-five, forty-six, forty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-two, sixty-three, seventy-eight, eighty, ninety-four, ninety-five, one hundred, one oh six, one one two, one one four, one one six, one two oh, one two one, one three six, one forty, one forty-seven, one one, one five five, one sixty, one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine, one seventy-four, one eighty, one eighty-one, and one eighty-four. We now proceed to the first session. The committee may proceed to a joint debate on the heads without amendment read out by the clerk just now. Members have been informed that the committee will have about seven hours to conduct this debate. After the debate, the committee will put to vote that the sums for the heads without the man stand part of the schedule. The debate, the debate now commences, Mr. Charles Mok.
Mister President, our chairman, I'm quite disappointed. And after looking at the voting result at the second reading stage, financial secretary then left and we're disappointed. In fact, members would like more government officials, including the financial secretary to be here to listen to our speeches. Now, members have spoken on innovation technology in this budget debate. When it comes to allocation of resources and government funding, it seems that we have a lot put in of fifty point three billion dollars. But like I said, the majority of resources is spent on setting up funds or building infrastructure, the innovation park, etcetera, but this is not sufficient. There are other initiatives in the policy address. And also other policies mentioned in the budget. In fact, last year in October, the chief executive mentioned in her policy address measures to remove obstacles, revamping obsolete laws and also nurturing talents. In this budget, there is, they are nowhere to be seen. In April, the pickle was just set up, the Policy Innovation Coordination Office. Must we wait for their work to get a start? But then October will come soon and then there'll be another policy address and that will be endless waiting for us. Fifty billion dollars, that's the next question, is it sufficient? For comparing to other necessary items such as education and social welfare, it seems to be quite extravagant. But I can say that this is not sufficient. I can give you one example. In the UK, a report was recently published and last year there was also another report in the parliament. It is said that they are going to invest one point three billion US dollars to develop one area. And that's AI, artificial intelligence. So for the UK government, you can see how they are committed. And apart from funding, the government is also going to attract foreign investment. Apart from having the funds ready, there will be four hundred million US dollars to attract multinational corporations, Microsoft, IBM, etcetera, all these famous companies. And even Canadian companies would be attracted to develop AI there. But what, all that we do is to set up a fund and wait. And they also talk about collaborating with universities such as Cambridge, Cambridge University. And there will be a supercomputer worth thirteen million US dollars for use by the tertiary institutions. Whereas for us, we invest money into the science park and then we will wait for investors. So we're just dishing out money without a purpose and this won't do. Second point is about regulation. In the UK. They have set up a series of research centers on regulations such as digital ethics and innovation centers to look into the matter of data privacy. And they will also consult the relevant sectors to remove obstacles. The third point is KPI. Last year, in the mid, at the end of last year, in fact, the UK government claims that AI itself by two thousand and thirty-five would make economic contribution of up to eight hundred billion US dollars. They have estimates, they have projections. Whereas for Hong Kong, we build infrastructure, we provide funds, but what about this effectiveness comparing to the fifty billion, you know, comparing to the UK government's efforts, fifty billion dollars is not really sufficient because for a single project in the UK, it costs ten billion dollars. And the funds are not just left idle. The funds are distributed in different areas such as education and manpower. They have very, they have a very clear idea what they should do in each area of policy. Whereas for us, it is nothing but bureaucracy. Let me give you one example. For example, we have the e-spot. It is said that one hundred million dollars will be devoted. Well, the government then says that, well, this should be left for the sector to decide. But in fact, this policy is now bin in another bucket and then left idle. That is why we see a lot of red tape in the, in Hong Kong. And the relevant government officials would then talk about manpower reform and that should be better planning in tertiary institutions, etcetera. And then again, their reply will be that that's in another bucket. I don't care how many buckets there are, I just want results. So Chairman, that is why they're doing better than us.
So you see, they're doing much better than us. There is only one difference between Hong Kong and the other countries. In other countries, they make sure everything is all linked up and they all work towards one direction. They attach great importance to innovation technology, whereas in Hong Kong, we have a silo approach. All the departments work on their own, ten departments may have twenty different directions. And in fact, they pull back each other, that's even worse. And they don't care much about innovation technology. So that's why I sympathize with the secretary for innovation technology, who's the only secretary sitting here. Very often, he might want to do this and that, but it cannot be done. And so we are doomed to fail. Or at least we will have to make double the effort for just half the results. Now, I like to be forward looking myself. In this budget, much resources have been earmarked. It's not that it's not useful, but it's not enough to address all the issues. So we still adopt the old approach, we still take a bureaucratic approach to deal with innovation and technology. Definitely. It's not enough. And definitely, we have to double our effort for half the results. So we don't just need a new fiscal philosophy. We need a new philosophy, a new mindset for the whole governance. Now, after voting in the second reading, I actually have been thinking hard as to whether I should support the budget. It really depends on what the government promises to do in the future. Is there really a determination? So we know there will be policy changes. You have to convince us of that instead of just setting up funds and dishing out money, setting up parks and so on. Other than that, what more can we do? Even the chief executive has said it herself, she, we need to do something. So how can we break through this entrenched bureaucracy? So that's to give us faith, so I will know whether I should support this budget or not.
Thank you, Mr. Gary Chen. Thank you, President, Chairman. There is a surplus of one hundred thirty-eight billion dollars this year, but the recent report is that there is an additional ten billion dollars in surplus, close to one hundred fifty billion dollars in fiscal surplus, that's a record high. Now, so we have an additional ten billion dollars and when for, what does the government think about it? Will the FS just put it in the reserve again? Then, that is not in line with the new fiscal philosophy as proposed by the chief executive and it would be irresponsible to do so. Now, there is an additional ten billion dollars. So would the FS consider some measures that we've mentioned, but you haven't taken on board? For example, helping people on the waiting list for public rental housing, could you give them a rent assistance? What about means tests, free outage allowance, could the eligibility lower to sixty-five years of age? So make, can you make good use of the ten billion dollars? Instead of just putting in the reserve? Now, the chief exec said that for Hong Kong, it's good that we have a deep pocket for the time being. So it's not a matter of whether, whether we can afford to do it, it's a matter of whether we will do it. Now, if we have such a huge surplus and if the government chooses to sit on the money, then it's no more than a scrooge. Now, for different bureau, they may get the different slices of the cake like the Innovation Technology Bureau. They're getting much additional resources. But then many people believe we're not doing enough to help the poor. So I am particularly concerned about what we can do to invest our wealth in achieving a balance in the community, especially between the have and have not. So what must the government do? With money to address issues that the government wouldn't do now? Well, it's because there are too many constraints arising from policies. For example, we say we have a shortage of land supply, the government wants to take land in the, resume land in the northeast new territory to build more housing. That's a good thing, but the government's still trying to work out a reasonable compensation for affected tenants. I know the government is afraid of breaking the rules or starting a new president. That's why they just keep to establish policies. Now, for the anti-northeast case, there's just two options, A and B. For affected tenants, they may get public housing, but they need to go through a means test and the other is to give them the squash allowance and they will move. Now, for affected tenants, both of these options are not palatable to them. Last week, Kuto North residents invited me to meeting. I had a long discussion with them. I would like to take this opportunity to tell you about their plight. Now, there is this seventy-year-old resident in Kuto North. This resident has been wearing chickens and pigs since the eighties in the village. Now, the residence is retired, but the resident is still living next to the chicken shed. Or the pigs die. And if we can take the government's current options, the resident won't get rehousing. And then there are two ladies living in converted sheds. One lady is a single parent family, in another case, the lady's husband suffered a stroke. And again, under the current policies, they won't get public housing. And then there's another gentleman who's living in a converted chicken shed. And again, under the current policy, he won't get public housing. Now, we are talking about these affected residents who've been there for a long time, they're not going to move with the current options. Now, you have so much money, why wouldn't you relax your policy? So these people would get public housing and they will gladly move. And that will help to make available land sooner and shorten the waiting list for public rent housing. So it will be a good thing for you to relax your policy. And so I would like to say this again here to the FS who's a cluster of cash. Please increase the cash allowance for affected residents in the N E North NT. And for residents or tenants without any properties, they should be given public housing. That's the second, the third one for the, they should be given public housing in Shangshui or Shaquen Estate. Now, if you offer them such a rehousing arrangements, they will be happy to move away from this village. And that's what the residents told me on that day. Another point, Chairman. For people aged between sixty and sixty-five, they did not benefit from the budget. As for, and also for the low-income groups, they don't benefit either. Now, the FS is now offering them four thousand dollars, but it's a one-off measure. What if in future we continue to have fiscal surplus? Will the budget still help these groups? If not, then next time round, for those aged between sixty and sixty-four and the low-income groups, they'll be left out again. And I would call that a structural omission of these groups. So it's always the case that in every budget, there are some groups not benefiting from it. But of course, the government may say that the economy, the economic situation fluctuates, so there's no promise, there will always be a surplus. But this is not the right fiscal mindset. Because in a budget, we don't see where this new fiscal philosophy is because we still see such structural omissions. The four thousand dollars now offered by the FS is lesson learned by him. So the government should learn a lesson from this four thousand dollar cash handout. In future, you must continue to pay attention to the low-income groups and also those aged between sixty and sixty-four. They have, this group has just retired, but they're not benefiting from any elderly benefits. So in the next budget, I would look forward to a solution from the government to deal with such structural omissions. One last point. Last week, there was a march on animal rights. There was three thousand people joining the march. The commissioner for police said that there are now twenty-three special task force on animal abuse in different districts. I hope there will be more resources to the secretary for food and health and the police. So they will have the resources to train frontline police officers. They, policemen could then attend special training programs, say, of the city university and so on. And this will help them in their effort to counter animal abuse, thank you. Mister Holden Chow.
Thank you, President. In the budget this year, much resources have been invested in promoting a diversified economy and innovation and technology. But apart from providing the resources, it is important to coordinate the efforts of different departments. It's also important to abandon the established mindsets of different departments. Now, China, the country is definitely going to speed up the promotion of innovation technology. If in Hong Kong, in the next three to five years, businesses do not actively develop the Internet of Things and reforms in information and technology, then Hong Kong would become a city with very little INT capabilities in the country. And then our position would could be jeopardized. Now, the, the, there, it's been said by certain government officials on the mainland that there are, the global situation is fast changing. And then, but then many people are still not embracing changes. So we need to remind the government time and again about this. As the S L government deals with innovation technology, it must be proactive. For the two thousand and twenty-five strategy of China, the Trade Development Council has done a study on that. Now, we could make use of a framework for promoting technologies. We should promote the application of INT as business solutions. This will help to support technological requirements as a result of development on the mainland. Hong Kong could become a platform for going global by mainland businesses. It could also be a platform for overseas businesses looking for partners on the mainland. Now, we have a strong intellectual property protection that would create a favorable business environment. So for the two thousand and twenty-five China strategy under the thirteenth five-year plan, that will provide many opportunities for businesses in Hong Kong, we hope the government will seize upon these opportunities. Now, I joined the Bay Area visits recently. What I see is that on the mainland, they are moving faster on the use of innovation technology. For example, in Dongguan, there is a new innovation base for new products in terms of financing, production or problems encountered during production, such as whether there are sufficient parts and so on, there is some one-stop support service. So I would suggest the government to do something. For example, for universities in Hong Kong, could they work closer with the Bay Area? Because Bay Area is the production, could be the production base. And then we could make full use of the one-stop support service provided by the mainland.
In fact, for example, the University of Science Technology have successful examples whereby the R and D is being done in Hong Kong and then production is being further takes place in Dongguan. And ultimately, ultimately, we see products being made available. So I hope that there are more, there will be more collaboration between R and D efforts in Hong Kong and that on the mainland. Now, I would like to say something about the Kai-Tak Terminal Cruise. There little has been said about it in the budget. But I must tell the government that the cruise terminal has become a dead city as criticized by some. And we don't want the government to say, after committing so many resource, so much resources into the cruise terminal, is seeing a cruise terminal not being, playing its function. The DAB has suggested that the retail and entertainment area in the cruise terminal be expanded substantially. Only by doing that, we will be able to revitalize the project. I don't the retail and the entertainment area within the cruise terminal should be expanded substantially. Chairman, I would like to take this opportunity to talk about the development of logistics sector. The sector in the freight forwarding sector has told me that the government should attract more international enterprises to establish distribution centers in Hong Kong to enhance the efficiency of the operation. We hope that the government can increase resources, identify land to develop new logistics park. Especially, e-commerce and online shopping have become very popular these days. So the government must do something with the logistics sector. So I hope that the government can hit our views and identify land to build modern distribution centers. I've been proposing to the government this. Whether it is the high-value added shipping industry, more support should be given. The government hasn't responded to me. The director of marine should delegate his powers to his senior management staff to vet applications for exemptions in, from the shipping company. So if a delegation of power is done, then it will enhance the efficiency of the whole operation. More ships as a result would be willing to come to be registered in Hong Kong and raise Hong Kong flags and use our services. And subsequently, other related services like marine insurance, arbitration services will be will benefit. So I hope that the government can respond to our proposals. Last, we hope that in relation to the small claims tribunal, there is a working group, a small group, looking at raising the claims from fifty thousand to seventy thousand dollars. I hope the government can give us a timetable on when it will be further raised to one hundred thousand dollars. And also more resources should be committed to the tribunal. And more importantly, it must ensure that the tribunal is equipped with sufficient manpower, including the judges, so that they can consolidate their legal viewpoints and then serve the public better. So I submit, Mister Jeremy Tam.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm speaking particularly about one government department, the government flying service. They are not having problems, it's just that the government is committing too little resources for them, so they're having great difficulties. Let me share some statistics. The annual allocation is three hundred and forty million dollars, eighteen, nineteen, that's the operating expenses. Now, for the GFS, they play a very important role in the society, they help with rescue operations. They are assistant of the government departments in their work during the inclement weather and typhoon situations. The GFS, I mean, stay dedicated to their duties. It is a small government department, but it doesn't mean that their contribution is little. But regrettably, what we are seeing is that over the years, in terms of the pilots, they, they are running a cutlet short of manpower. In the special FC, we have raised questions and we see some statistics. In two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, the establishment is this, seventy pilots, where there are, in fact, only forty-three were in the posts. So forty-three people were sharing out seventy people's work. So only sixty, well, sixty percent of the posts are filled. Why? Because the civil aviation sector has been developing well in Hong Kong and China. So we, we're competing for manpower. So if the government still offers the same remuneration and salary, you won't be able to attract people, no matter how many posts you create. In the meeting, I have said this, I've told the secretary for security to this. He said that he is going to hire more people. How can you get more people with the same pay? Let's look at statistics, fifteen, sixteen, forty-four, it is the establishment, and thirty-eight pilots. Sixteen, seventeen, fifty-one. Sixteen seventeen, fifty-one is the establishment, and then only forty-three pilots. Seventeen eighteen, seventy posts, and only forty-three were in the posts. So, so there's no use adding more posts, not, ultimately, only forty-three are willing to bear with the situation and stay. The Democratic camp has also written to the Secretary for Security on this. On the thirty-first of January is a joint letter. We have proposed different solutions on how to boost morale. Say, for example, well, the first thing that I'm unhappy about is, they are, well, the head of the G F S is also the head of a disciplined service, the head of department, well, he doesn't have a, a pip on his shoulder, so to speak. Say, for the Director of Affairs and the Commissioner of Police, while we used to call it a sort of pip and with a crown and so on. Now, after nineteen ninety-seven, the design has been changed. Well, they should have that kind of pip in the uniform. But, well, the head of department of the G F S has one less pip. This is a government department, a very small department. People are willing to put up with the difficult conditions. But then, how can you treat my head of department like that? He is a head of department. He is, this is one among the many disciplinary services. So we must upgrade the status of this head of department and make him a directorate, make it a directorate post. Second, which creates deputy directors and assistant directors posts, and also a chief officer, because we're now lacking a promotional ladder. While there is only one chief pilot post, it's a D one post, and beyond that, there is no other post. And then, next to him, above him, is the director. You don't have a promotional ladder for them, and you are not willing to pay more to hire the pilots either. So it is impossible for you to recruit people. So the pay is out of touch with the reality. You know that within the airport, the G F S office is next to the commercial aviation center. The pilots in that other center are used to work in the G F S. Well, the, the number of pilots working in that other center outnumber the pilots in the G F S. So in other words, the government has been investing a lot in training up pilots, but then most of them, the trained pilots, have left. You aren't able to retain your staff. The longer the pilots work there, well, actually, they are, have to do even more paperwork. Pilots would like to fly in airplanes, they just don't want to have promotion. So if they are bogged down, say, by paperwork, then this is something they dislike and they will leave. So we suggest that civilian clerical staff should be recruited to help them. The Secretary of Security said that it's all right, we can recruit two to four pilots from outside who are experienced in rescue operations. So let me make some calculations here. Forty-three were the, were the pilot, the incumbent pilots. So maybe you, you said that you are going to have additional four. So in total, it means forty-seven. And then, you said that seventy is not enough, I'll add two more for you, seventy-two. So there, there isn't enough to go by. Well, you've, well, you have an establishment of seventy-two, but then you are only able to recruit forty-seven. This is a structural problem. If you are not willing to face up to it and you are still rehashing the official line, saying that we are going to increase resources to hire more people, you won't be able to hire people. In Asia in particular, there's been keen competition for talents. Well, for Hong Kong-trained pilots, many of them have left G F S, they have gone for the mainland market. Well, say for the Tycoons there, they would like to, they would, they like to hire Hong Kong pilots as their private pilots. They can speak Cantonese and they don't trust the mainland pilots. So they want to recruit Hong Kong pilots, so many more are leaving. So please, face up to the problem. So don't stick to your official line, and you won't be able to resolve the problem. You should tackle the structural problem. You should review the establishment, establishment structure. Next year, we will only again be seeing sixty percent of the posts being filled. Next one, Mr. Long Yu Chong.
Chairman, this part is about sections without any amendments, or items without any amendments. And I think they have to do with the Hong Kong government's fiscal philosophy. I have to talk about the fiscal philosophy of the new term of government. And the budget shows clearly that there is, in fact, no new fiscal philosophy. They are just sticking, sticking to the old rules, and the poverty problem remains. There is a lack of long-term planning and thinking, and you are skewed towards the conglomerates and the property developers, and you are ignoring the plight of the grassroots, and the wealth gap is not being addressed. The P O P of Hong Kong U in a survey showed that twenty-six point three percent of the respondents are happy with the budget. And it's, the average score is forty-eight point two, the lowest in ten years' time. It's not surprising. The, the reserves has reached a record high, and together with the eighty billion dollars of housing reserve, we have had at least one thousand one hundred and seventy billion dollars, and it's equivalent to twenty-eight months of the government's expenditure. We originally pinned high hopes on the budget.
But in terms of public spending proposed in the budget, we see only minor improvements. The government continues to be a miser. On the other hand, fifty billion dollars, the government's largest is spent on innovation technology. Whereas for helping the underprivileged, I don't see any major improvement from the part of the government to improve people's livelihood. At the same time, we see some minor increase in certain areas' spendings, helping the poor and the underprivileged, but they are dished out in such a fragmented manner. So I have the impression that the government is only touching the surface. The government is not focusing its effort in improving different areas of people's livelihood. In fact, since the last administration, the government has reinstated the Commission on Poverty, and the poverty line has been set. But we see the poverty population continues to increase. Elderly poverty is especially serious, and it is deteriorating. The poverty rate, as we can see, among elderly people, is double that of the general population. So in the budget, there is no long-term poverty alleviation measure, and we are very concerned because the government continues to talk about the aging population. Against population aging, what else can we turn to? We do not have retirement protection. If we only rely on various allowances for the elderly, on the whole, the government will bear a greater financial burden, whilst elderly people's livelihood will not be improved. At the same time, we see a continuous increase in demand for residential care home places. But on this occasion, there is just an addition of several hundred places. How can that cope with the expanding aging population? We understand that the waiting list for residential care homes is so long, we have some fifty thousand people waiting for a place. So an increase of several hundred places will not suffice. We are an affluent society. But for the underprivileged, they barely make ends meet. And with soaring prices in recent years, and escalating living costs, the problem is even more serious. And the public is concerned about housing. They don't get a roof over the head. Food prices, at the same time, is such that it causes a major problem among the public. If you go to a fast food restaurant for lunch, you will see that it costs at least fifty or even sixty dollars. So for the end, without public rental housing tenants earning low wages with such high living expenses, how can they cope? Although there is an increase in various allowance amounts, they can far from coping with the increase in rental and commodity prices. And their living environment is also very poor. So how is it palatable for them to understand that the government is really caring for them? There is a lack of long-term planning in this budget. The other point is that the government myopically is dishing out sweetness in an unfair manner. And in fact, before the budget, different members in this council proposed to the government, including myself, that since the public office is flushed with cash, consideration should not only be given to relief measures such as tax rebates, rates waivers, because only those with means will benefit from these measures. Whereas for the grassroots, they don't benefit from it. We don't agree. Instead, money should be dish out to everyone, like what we had in the past, six thousand dollars per person, so that there will be equal distribution of economic success. Of course, under the new fiscal philosophy adopted by the government, the idea is for public resources to be spent on those in need. But the problem is, how can we make sure that public resources are spent properly and focused on those in need? In the end, we see minor patches here and there to plug the gaps, so that in terms of income tax, profits tax, and rates, we see rebates and waivers. And for owners of multiple properties, they stand to benefit even more. So that government revenue foregone goes up to forty billion dollars. On the other hand, as for C S S A, old age living allowance and old age allowance, the increase is just eight billion dollars, not even up to ten billion dollars. So you can see that the so-called new fiscal philosophy, or the government's proposal to dish out sweetness, is nothing but benefiting the upper echelon of society. They, they benefit more, whereas for the underprivileged, they don't get anything. Isn't it really an irony when the government claims itself to be caring government? And, ma'am, deputy, about this budget, it faces a lot of criticisms. On the other hand, the government insists that the budget is in line with the new style of governance proposed by this administration. It is also in line with the new philosophy of the government. Isn't it astonishing? When there is already public outcry because of uneven distribution of economic success, the government insists that it is justified and that any problem can be dealt with under the Community Care Fund. But we all know the constraints of the Community Care Fund, and we question whether the gaps can be plugged so that the grassroots can really benefit. So I think this is a genuine issue. The greater concern is this, and that is the attitude of this administration. We doubt whether there is sincerity on the part of the administration to share the economic success with the public. And we have been raising doubts about that. Because, take the Chief Executive as an example, she always talks about people's livelihood. Well, she used to say that people's livelihood should be put first, but I think she's forgotten about it. Because from the policy address and from this budget, we can see that the policy address and the budget is all about giving out rewards to voters who supported her in the C E's election. So we see the C E buttering up the business sector, whilst the wealth gap remains, and we are gravely concerned. Mr. Long Yu Chong, let me remind you that ten minutes have left, please focus on the amendment, the debate. Well, ma'am chair, I don't know whether you've heard me in the beginning, because we're talking about the debate on heads without amendment. And all these heads have to do with the new fiscal philosophy of this government. And I'm commenting on the new philosophy. Why can't we narrow the wealth gap and improve people's livelihood through this budget? Ma'am Chair, sharing the economic success regarding this, I don't think that the government could improve people's livelihood. So I think the government should rethink how to make better use of the huge reserve we have so as to benefit the grassroots level. Because for grassroots, their burden increases. And if you visit the local communities, you'd understand, rent is high, commodity prices are also very high. So government officials should really mow this over and consider how we can help, help improve people's livelihood. Mr. Wu Chi Wei, ma'am chair. According to the latest announcement, it is said that the fiscal reserve now says a hundred and seventy-two point four billion dollars, some thirty billion dollars more than the estimate. Over the years, financial secretaries have failed to correctly reflect the true situation of the public office, and this is a criticism coming from all sides. Now, we have a surplus of thirty, we have the wrong estimate by some thirty billion dollars. I don't know the thinking of the financial secretary, but I think that the extra sum should be spent on areas most needed. Like Dr. Lo Chi Kwong said this morning, in terms of elderly services, there are bottlenecks regarding manpower and land. But from the government's perspective, if the government is committed that this mission should be fulfilled, like Dr. Lo Chi Kwong said, in the next twenty years, four hundred and thirty-eight residential care homes for the elderly should be provided to cope with the increase in elderly population, then even if you're not meeting the target, you should at least show commitment and try your best to show that the government has the resolve to achieve the target. If you don't show this resolve, I am concerned whether other government departments will be able to provide support to help Dr. Lo Chi Kwong resolve the constraints regarding manpower and land in the provision of residential care homes for the elderly. Point number two, very often we hear that the government has not considered the aging population in the budget. When the government talks about increasing commitment on different areas, accounting for a certain percentage of total government spending, and then they are on the rise, we're talking about consumption and expenditure. Whereas for other societies, against a backdrop Whereas for other societies, against a backdrop of an aging population, a silver-haired economy or market is a new concept. That is to say, once you set it as a goal that the government should achieve, and if you can foresee that an aging population will definitely take place, then you need to come up with a lot of measures such as manpower training, use of technology, and A I technology. If you consider it holistically as an industry and then deploy resources accordingly, then you are promoting silver-haired economy. The government isn't doing that. On the other hand, the government focuses on spending on social welfare, but this is expenditure. Can we just take another perspective? And use it as a starting point of building an industrial chain? Because if there is no business opportunity, then any economic activity will not create any drive to promote the economy. So I think the financial secretary has failed in this regard. The second point is about nurturing talents. In this budget, there is much emphasis on innovation and technology. Well, on this occasion, fifty billion dollars have been allocated to the development of innovation and technology. But like I always say, we don't want talk shop. Money is of course important, and it is an important decisive factor. And it is also necessary for building a solid foundation for I T development. But more importantly, if you want to pool the talents, what exactly are we going for? The chief executive, government officials, even leaders in the business sector talk about the Greater Bay Area, and then we should capitalize on the opportunity, we should give full play to our potential. But does it mean that it will really be beneficial for Hong Kong? In Taiwan, the experience is is this. Well, there was a manpower drain in the electronics industry such that the talents are all moved to Zhejiang and other innovation parks in the mainland. And then the Taiwanese economy became stagnant for over a decade. If we do not have the economic base to attract talents, then we could only be supporting others. So if we become only manpower counterpart after allocating so much resources, our effort will be futile. We have tertiary institutions, we have good universities, a good legal system, we have protection of intellectual property, free flow of information. We have all these prerequisites, but will they be sustainable?
Do we want mainland's development never to catch up with set of Hong Kong? Or would you have to consider that mainland may catch up with us, therefore we must go even faster and be further forefront? That's the rabbit and tortoise race lesson. Now, even if the rabbit has an advantage, it must not go to sleep, otherwise the tortoise will catch up. So do we have the drive to maintain our economic edge? The S L government has always been telling the public that we must seize upon the opportunities on the mainland and jump on the bandwagon. But the S L government has never said how we could maintain our own competitive edge against the circumstances. By a competitive edge, that means it's something that no one can replace us with. Now, in the Bay, whoever could become the Silicon Valley in the Bay Area, that's where talents will gather. If we want to gather talents, we can't have these vague opportunities, intangible opportunities. So we need to bring people to establish themselves here. Otherwise, this talent could be easily attracted to other places. Now, we see that on the mainland, cities have been using various means to bring Hong Kong talents to go and live in their cities and engage in R and D worldwide. Because we have the talents that the mainland doesn't have now. But if our talents are gone, how can we then bring in even more talents? And if the trend changes and then we lose out, then it will be dangerous for us. So as we pass the budget, we must also mention these dangers we face. And we cannot resolve these problems just with money. We need to have policies, we need to tell the people of Hong Kong that as we face competition in neighboring regions, we must make sure that industries could be established in Hong Kong. We must make Hong Kong an attractive place for talents. And so we must first enhance our advantage, and then we could make use of the advantage, go to the mainland for businesses, for business. But so today, we are competing for talents, if we don't take this step, we're going to lose out. For innovation and technology, the most important is whether government officials have the mindset. If they still think that it's best not to do anything, because then they'll make mistakes. If that's what they have, they're just being perfunctory, then we do not have the most needed elements in promoting I N T in Hong Kong. So I must ask the chief executive and the financial secretary to realize this. Now, whether Hong Kong is the future depends on whether we have the commitment to address the risks we face. We need to make sure that Hong Kong has sustainable competitiveness, that is the key. If we do not have that vision, and then we just tell people, you go to the mainland and look for opportunities, then we're just hollowing out Hong Kong, and that is unacceptable. Thank you. Doctor Chang Chong Tai. Madam Deputy. I'm talking about this budget that has nothing in face of immense changes. Now, we have a surplus of close to one hundred and fifty billion dollars. But as usual, the government is unwilling to invest the surplus in the people of Hong Kong. As some members pointed out, the government is considering all means to hollow out Hong Kong. For example, by developing local agriculture or helping local hawkers and store operators that would help to promote local economy, but the government is reluctant to do that. Rather, the government would plow in fifty billion dollars to invest in the so-called innovation technology. But at the end, it will just be Tencent, Alibaba, or other huge mainland businesses that would benefit. Now, we're talking about the current situation, that is, China and the U S are longer ahead, and Hong Kong is at risk. Now, Z T E is being targeted. And so the fifty billion dollars is just a mission given by the mainland for us to promote innovation technology. You also want to attract talents to Hong Kong, you want the science and technology park to become a base for R and D. I think to the pro-establishment camp and the government, that means huge business opportunities. But to Hong Kong people, it's a fatal underlying risk. Because here we're talking about a tug-of-war between two major world powers, China and the U S. Now, China has the ambition to take over the United States as the leader in the world. And that sparked concerns among Western countries. Okay, so in the past, that's the engagement policies between China of Western countries over China. But now they are feeling the risks. The Z T E will be the first to suffer the consequences of fallout between China and the United States. The U S Consul General in Hong Kong said at luncheon that China has gone against their commitment on the W T O. That's why U S has proper reasons to ask for compensation. And the Consul General said on that day that China has already got the trump card. And the trump card is already been given a yellow card. And that means China should change its soccer tactics. But, and so the U S is asking China to go back to the previous economic state or policies. But then for Hong Kong, the C E and the F S thought that China is moving towards capitalism. And so we could make huge profits seizing upon these opportunities. For most of the investment in the budget is still going by the previous mindset that we could make huge profit from the developments of the country. Now, state enterprises are supported by the government. Foreign enterprises don't stand a chance, is the case in Hong Kong too. The link is selling shopping malls now. And in Hong Kong, we face many business conglomerates. And there are also state enterprises coming to Hong Kong. These so-called successful state enterprises build their success on making connections with officials. And in, so we on the twenty-second of April, Xi Jinping, the Secretary General of the Communist Party, said that we must fully appreciate the belief or the Marxist belief, we must use the Marxist theory to address problems in modern China. We must enhance such capability these two. And then it is a definite trend that mankind will move towards communism. So we must build on such a belief. Now, I'm saying this because in response to the budget here in Hong Kong. In the eyes of Communist China, it's a tug-of-war on the technology and financial resources with other countries. But because they want to overpower the Western countries. Now, Hong Kong's economy will definitely be affected in this power struggle. And if I could respond to the speech of the U S Consul General, Kat Tong. Now, he said he doesn't want us to become the voiceless victim. They want, he wants Hong Kong to show to leverage on our long-term potential. And in conclusion, he said that in terms of our finances, economy, and so on, well, we are able to compete is exactly because we are unique and free. So it's because Hong Kong's freedom, that's why we have disadvantages. The budget is based on infrastructure, the infrastructure that Hong Kong is free. But then the puppets of China kept wanting to restrict our freedoms. Now, Wang Guang Ya said that if in Hong Kong we shout chants a slogan to end a one-party dictatorship, then could such a person join the electoral election? Wang Guang said, no, because it's against the country's principles. But then Hong Kong people have been put on the spot by such a puppet of China. What if the U S cited a reform legislation, and then Hong Kong will be left out? Now, Paul Chang mentioned his grand blueprint, but that's all imagination. Now, it includes the fifty billion dollar I N T fund. And also under the so-called One Country, under One Country Two System, the so-called unprecedented opportunities of Hong Kong, they are all just empty talks. Edward Yao, Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, said recently that he hopes that the U S would respect Hong Kong as an independent customs territory. And Hong Kong could be a third party. And when U S side of relations worsen, then we could be a third party in trade negotiations. So we want to enjoy the trade advantages, but at the same time, we want to cozy up to our masters in Beijing. So that's Hong Kong people, you know, being smart or straightwise. But could but then they say actually rest with the U S, they have already shown us the yellow card. Now, if we go by what the government is doing now, trying to dodge issues, there's no way we could face the destiny that Hong Kong will suffer the consequences. Now, for the amendments, I will speak on returning wealth to the people when I talk about those amendments. But I think for now, we have to consider our strategic position. Now, Hong Kong doesn't have a clear position. So whatever is in the budget, it means nothing. We are talking about the budget today, but it's really just about image. You know, dishing out cash is about image. And how much we give to healthcare and education is also just about image. But for such a public relations tactics, the government is doing a poor job about that. Even though they're giving out cash, there are plenty of complaints from the public. So on this budget, I'd like to make one final appeal. I hope government officials in Hong Kong and the so-called advisers of China in Hong Kong, I want them to note this. Hong Kong is able to enjoy economic competitive edge or political competitiveness or cultural competitiveness only because Hong Kong is free. So in this budget, I have to vote against it, because this budget is all empty talk. Thank you.
Doctor Helena Wong. Madam Deputy. Madam Deputy, on the budget, I would like to focus on several areas, including public health. Professor Sophia Chan spoke, and she mentioned that that sixty-one point two billion dollars will be allocated to the hospital authority. But then only one hundred and twenty billion dollars were used for the Chinese medicine training and research centers of the eighteen districts. So less than one percent of the total amount. So if people go to visit these district Chinese medicine centers, they have to pay more, one hundred and twenty dollars. How come that Western medicine services are subsidized, but for C M is less than one percent? How come the people have to pay for the cost of having C M consultation, whereas they don't have to pay anything for the Western medicine services? So it goes to show that the government would just like to work on the hardware. The government has promised to build a Chinese medicine hospital in Changquanou. And he wants to hand over the hospital to the NGOs to run it on a self-financed basis. For a long time, we said, you see that the government is attaching importance to Western medicine and not Chinese medicine. There is Western medicine doctors hegemony in Hong Kong. And the D P hopes that the government will attach importance not only to Western medicine, but also Chinese medicine. And the D P hopes that the government will attach importance not only to Western medicine, but also Chinese medicine. And also integrated medical approaches, especially for oncology discipline. A lot of patients might have gone through chemotherapy and radiotherapy. They would like to consult C M doctors to help them rehabilitate. But the government is disregarding C M practice in Hong Kong. We know that the government is reviewing the situation. D P hopes that the government can seriously consider C M to be incorporated into the public healthcare system and it will not be left to fend for itself. So that Hong Kong people can enjoy quality and affordable C M outpatient and hospital services. Apart from Chinese medicine, I would like to say that the government is plugging a lot of resources into hardware. In twenty sixteen, there was a first-phase hospital development plan, twenty million dollars has been allocated. At the F C, Q M H, Kowloon Hospital, Lady of Mariner Hospital and Wong Tyson Hospitals redevelopment plans have been endorsed by the F C. And in this budget, the F S is allocating money for the second-phase development of hospital program development plan, three hundred billion dollars have been set aside. In face of aging population, we need more hospitals and the D P supports it. The question is, is not enough to have money for the hardware? If you don't have doctor, enough doctors, nurses and physiotherapists, then it's no good. So the question is how to increase the number of training places for healthcare staff? We don't want to see the situation whereby the hospital is built and we don't have enough doctors and nurses. So the government must tell us clearly the plans for developing healthcare staff, how many more people do we need? You make miscalculations all the time. And as a result, many people have to wait for a long time to see specialists. I'm particularly concerned about first-year degree program in universities for healthcare workers. We know that we are running short of manpower, we need more optimist P Ts, et cetera, in the future. The D P has all along asked for increasing the number of first-year degree subsidized places. But the government is not willing to it. For the fifteen thousand first-year degree places, if they are spread among the eight U G C funded institutions, you are putting a cap to it, to the number. But if we need, we need more healthcare staff, shouldn't we be increasing the number of places for doctors, nurses and physiotherapists? And then we have to have an I T park in the loop area. And then we need to train up more talents in that area as well. So you have the cap of fifteen thousand first-year degree places in eight institutions. And that means the eight U G C institutions will cut the number of places in, say, the humanities programs, social sciences, histories, pure mathematics, et cetera. And as a result, you won't be doing well with I T development because there are few mathematics, say, students. So apart from building infrastructure, you must increase the number of subsidized places in universities to train up healthcare staff. And maybe you should exclude the places for healthcare manpower healthcare staff in university places. So consequently, we don't have to reduce the number of places in other disciplines in order to increase the number of places in healthcare staff. Now, I'm going to talk about primary healthcare in this budget. Primary healthcare is mentioned. In paragraph one four six of the budget, the government has never set the amount that would be plowed in to develop this. You will be allocating sixty-one point two billion to H A, but then you are only allocating one hundred million dollars to D H four, doing, working on primary healthcare. The D P has emphasized then, on top of hospitals, we also have to work more on primary healthcare healthcare education so that people don't have to be hospitalized. So C M service, dental care services, and eye checkup and so on. For all these primary healthcare services, we need, investment is required. But in this year's budget, nothing is mentioned on that front. And I would finish up with this last point. It's about water and the development bureau. The ombudsman has recently released a report about the water leakage of pipes. Fifteen point two percent of the pipes have leakage problems. Our, we are lagging behind neighboring countries such as Singapore where the rate is five percent only in the past six years. And sixty, ninety-six million cubic meters of liters of fresh water and twenty-seven million of seawater have been lost. If we take on board the amount of every cubic meter will cost ten dollars, so we are actually draining our money away every year. Nine hundred and sixty million dollar has been drained away, so to speak. And the government hasn't responded to the fact that many buildings are not installed with a chief water meter and then the water leakage is some thirty-two point three percent there. So it's a huge waste and water resources are precious. And I hope that the government can seriously study into this and expedite the work on replacing old pipes, it's too slow now. Second, subsidy must be given to housing estates to install proper water meters and also to undertake repair work on leaking pipes. I hope that the government can commit resources on that, we should cherish our water resources. So I so speak. Mr. Ted Hoey, thank you, Madam Deputy. I will be talking about education and environment. In education, after Carrie Lam's government assumed office, five billion dollars will be allocated as recurrent spending on education. And the ratio of education expenses in G D B will be raised. We have high hopes on Carrie Lam's education policy, but then up to today, we see that the problems in education cannot be resolved just by having more money. Well, in my amendment, I have raised two points. One is about our textbooks and Chinese history textbooks in particular. And also there is no way that the government can, that the public can monitor how the money is spent, especially on textbooks, I will talk more later on. And also, I am moving amendment on the B C A. But it was not admitted by the president. Mr. Yip Kin Young, and I am moving an amendment to cut the expenditure of B C A by seventy-three million dollars per year. How come that the B C A still remains controversial today? And for this seventy-three million dollars, we don't think it should be spent. The controversy has persisted amongst parents, schools, et cetera. And the problem is still remains unresolved. The government proposes to conduct the test on anonymous spaces and it will be done through a drawing of lots. I think the government is just deceiving us. And is it the case that schools can rest assured? Now, every school must still take the test. It's just that the number of students will, taking the test will be, become smaller. As a result, every school will resort to drilling. Have you cut down on the incentive to drilling? You can ask any student or parent whether there is less drilling and less homework these days? No, no, that's not the case. Now, it will be done in anonymous spaces with no students and school names recorded. But then schools can also opt to have the whole school taking the test. And after that, a school report will be given to you. So the school's names will be recorded and schools will compete against each other again. So that's a source of the problem. So all these talks about not anonymous approach, et cetera, are cheating Hong Kong people and education sector. There are now five hundred and thirty-seven primary schools, over a hundred and eighty have the whole grade taking part. And twenty-four public sector schools are taking the tests across, I mean, all the students in that grade will take the test. So public sector schools are run by the government and ninety percent of them are taking the test. So the government is taking the lead to us, to having the whole school taking the test. So the drilling culture remains, this is not something that should be done. So this seventy-three million annual spending should be canceled. This, this test is torturing our students and our students have, will be losing their very happy childhood. And only ultimately, the students and the parents will suffer. The E D B knows that B C A is contentious. Why don't you pay heed to our views? For schools which would like to take the whole form to take the B C A, guidelines should be set to require schools to consult the parents first, to have the parents' consent first. So at least, I think the bureau and schools should give parents a choice whether to allow the children to take a test or not. And this is the greatest grievance from parents on B C A. Because we want autonomy against the culture of drilling. Parents should be given a choice whether to take part in it. On education, that's all I want to say. And on the environment, I think that a lot of people place a focus in this budget on electric cars. Even when there is a new scheme allowing replacement of one car with another, on the whole, I think this is backward thinking, we are lagging behind other countries. Of course, car-for-car arrangement is good in the sense that old private car owners would be encouraged to replace cars with electric cars. But as of now, the government is still refusing to say for sure that electric cars or electric vehicles should be the first choice for car owners. The government, right now, is still refusing to say that the mainstream development is to promote electric vehicles. So what is this policy about? Although we have the replacement arrangement, there are few participants. Can we relax the criteria? Before announcement of the budget, if a private car owner bought, has bought us an old second-hand car, whether they would be allowed to take part in the scheme as well? Now, apart from the vehicle replacement scheme for the first registration tax, new car owners can enjoy the waiver of the F R T of up to ninety-seven five hundred dollars. But this is not a strong enough an incentive. So for the ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars, it has to be adjusted upward substantially. So that electric vehicles will enjoy a competitive edge over traditional vehicles. Now, the budget is about government spendings. And for example, on electric vehicles, we do not have sufficient public charging facilities. And this is one of the areas where the government should spend money on. We should set the policy objective. For example, in a certain timeframe, the ratio of public charging facilities should be increased from one to five. And in fact, I think it costs less than fifty million dollars to build a public charging station. Why is it that the government is not taking this forward? Another problem with electric vehicles is that in private housing estates, because of their own policy, it is difficult for owners to install charges. So can we, can the government formulate a policy so that owners' corporations will find it more attractive to install charges in their private housing estates? Such that electric vehicles will become the mainstream in Hong Kong sooner. So on the whole, I don't see any commitment from the government to deploy resources to address the environmental issues. This year, or in fact, the next financial year, the municipal solid waste charging scheme will be rolled out. Under this charging scheme, the annual recurrent avenue revenue can reach one billion dollars, together with the fact that we, that the the public office is flush with cash, I think the government should do more. For example, for the Scheme of Control Agreement, it is said that renewable energy should be developed. Why can't the government use this money to subsidize private housing estates to install solar panels? How about recycling of waste plastics? And also subsidy for the exporters of recyclables and processing of recyclables? Why can't the government conduct research and take the extra step and in the budget? The government refers to the yard waste policy. Ninety percent of yard waste from the government goes to the landfill as well. And we're lagging far behind other countries. If we spend more money so that we have more manpower in the relevant departments with more supporting measures, we can recycle yard waste instead of sending them to the landfill. So I think the government, despite sitting on huge reserve, is refusing to spend money to resolve the issue of waste. So I think Mrs. Carrie Lam and Mr. Wong Hamsing should go back and think about it. Mr. Tony Che.
Thank you, Ma'am Chair. In the past few years, every year, the government has accumulated a huge surplus. So it is only just that we take care of the poor and the underprivileged. But on the other hand, we are neglecting the middle class who has made significant contribution to our economy. After the announcement of this year's budget, there was a criticism that the government is focusing on the middle class and neglecting the grassroots. I don't think this criticism is fair. Because if we take a look at the government's spending on social welfare and taking care of the old and frail and the underprivileged, there's been an increase. Comparing to the, comparing to that, the government's effort in helping the middle class is really minimal. That's why, over the past few years, I have also heard suggestions that the government should look after the middle class. And this year, the budget finally has placed a stronger emphasis on the middle class. I think it is only right because the middle class forms the most solid pillar of our society. And they have contributed significantly to the prosperity and stability of our society. But very rarely will they voice out their difficulties. I'd like to quote from the from an article from Professor Chen Su Kun from Hong Kong U titled "The Neglected Middle Class." And I think the statement is still valid today. And I think the statement is still valid today. She said, in general, the middle class is not against the idea. Of um the more capable ones pay more. They do not. Oppose the uh they're not opposed to the fact that there may be conflict uh and confrontation between the rich and the poor. The middle class do not uh does not qualify for public rental housing, and yet they are subject to huge uh pressure from living expenses. Um the government just announced that for the surplus in twenty seventeen eighteen, it re- it has reached one hundred and forty eight point nine billion dollars. Ten billions more than the estimate. So apart from taking care of the underprivileged, against such huge. Suppluse, the government should also ease the burden of the middle class by putting forward relief measures. For example, providing um a um a rung of the ladder of subsidized housing so that they can share the fruits of economic success. And that is why I support the Financial Secretary's relief measures of tax re- um um uh tax rebate. So I think that um uh instead of criticizing the government of neglecting the middle class, the government should take care of both the middle class. And the grassroots. At the same time, we should have infra- infrastructure um that meets international standards. According to the budget, in twenty nineteen twenty to twenty twenty two twenty three, spending on infrastructure would exceed a hundred billion dollars. However, when can the resources uh set aside be actually spent on the construction on infrastructure? According to the chief executive in March, in twenty se- sixteen seventeen, there were only eighteen infrastructure projects. With an approved funding of fifty billion dollars, whereas sixty percent of the remaining projects suffered uh blockage. Affecting the uh construction industry. And uh the government also. Submitted over a hundred projects for the electrical approval involving a total funding amount of two hundred billion dollars. But as of early March, only about one third of the amount applied for. Uh was approved by the Finance Committee. In examining these funding applications, some members have emphasized that members should monitor the government. Well, this is a sound argument, but if this if it is done done uh out of a political motive, such that there is filibustering. And um and stalling the projects for no reason, is that really what we want? Because not only the construction industry is affected, construct- construction costs will also go up. Ma'am Chair, the budget. Um advocates saving for the rainy days, improving infrastructure to improve livelihood. So that Hong Kong can be a smart, livable city. But according to the Ombudsman's recent report. The water, the bursting of water pipes in Hong Kong is such that we have an overall leakage leakage rate of fifteen point two percent. Far higher than the five percent leakage rate of Singapore. And even in Japan. In recent years, they have maintained the rate at two to three percent because every twenty years, the Japanese government would would replace water pipes. Uh or water mains to prevent aging of um the system. And we have see, we have gradually seen the uh problems arising from the aging water mains and we see various works. Uh repairment works, dishing out uh dishing out money may benefit the public. At the same time, however. I emphasize that the government should save for the rainy day and invest in the future and invest in infrastructure. Conduct uh public works projects to rehabilitate roads and water mains. Three billion dollars in the budget have been reserved to take forward Operation Building Bright two point O. So that with suitable building maintenance and repair, building safety can be enhanced. So that the uh age, the the aging of building block ca- uh building stock can be delayed. So that the living environment can be improved. However, apart from enhancing building. Uh facilities, more should be invested uh into um building professionals. So that or consultants, so that the appear, the exterior as well as the interior of buildings can be improved. So that we can have nice looking buildings. I always talk about minor works projects. That should be participation from S M Es and young people so that they can um they can also give play to their potential. In the next five financial years, I propose that two hundred and fifty million dollars be. Uh spent on small and medium enterprises so that they can um they can grasp the opportunities. Arising from the Belt and Road Initiative. I'm all for this proposal. The budget also proposes to uh set aside one billion dollars to uh. For the Innovation Technology Fund so that the sector can be encouraged to make use of innovation technology. At the same time, I am also concerned whether the government is keeping pace with this development. Civil servants should be given the appropriate training. So that we don't see the problem of the government system not uh catching up with the uh private sector system. Such that there won't be a waste of resources. Um ma'am Chair, I support the appropriation bill and I su- also support the heads without amendment. Send part of the bill.
Mister Wilson All, thank you, Madam Deputy. On this budget. Uh I visited Wang Ta Xing Kun Tong, we're together with other D A B colleagues, we went to different districts to. Have residence meetings. We've had thirteen such meetings actually, to listen to residents' views. So this is the opportunity for me. Today to um pa- pass on the residents' views. The government is sitting on over one billion dollars of reserve. And this year, the fiscal sur- surplus is a staggering one hundred and forty eight billion dollars. So. You should consider how you could make the most of the such financial resources. Or you need to spend where spending is due, but at the same time, we have to consider how you can share the fruits of success with the people. The um treasury is flush with cash, but the government is being so um um stingy. So of course, the public uh feel aggrieved. Now, the D A B has proposed a series of measures to improve people's livelihood. And return wealth to the people um eh eh during the budget consultation. Now, there are many measures that could be uh easily operated. For example, for those six oh sixty five. Uh they don't need to go through means test for old age allowance and uh also, there should be no means test for the eight, those aged between sixty and sixty four. For transfer concession and so on. But the government um is so stubborn, it just wouldn't spend money. So that's why people doubt the government's sincerity in returning wealth to the people. Under public pressure, at the end, the government came up with some. Um uh look blocking measure to give four thousand dollars to eligible residents. So this uh this is to allow uh people from different strata to then share in the fruits of economic success. But then. There's uh strong criticisms too about the cumbersome application procedure, the high administrative costs. So so people doubt why the government should even bother. Now, since this um measure was announced, I've answered many questions from the public. People, the public said that they have to meet so many conditions, uh they don't know um when they should fill in the form and so on. So the government thinks that government is being very reluctant in giving head cash handout. Now, the Financial Secretary eh is trained as a trained accountant, so he must be sensitive for figures. Since you have quoted so many figures in budget, let me do some calculations for the government. First, about um uh supply of housing units. The Long Term Housing Strategy has stated the ten year rolling. Average in housing unit supply. This is what the uh Mister Frank Chang's been saying, that two hundred and eighty thousand public rental housing units. And hundred and eighty thousand private housing units. Um if we use five years. The next five years is the period, the aim is um one hundred and forty thousand P R H units and of public units, housing units and. Um ninety thousand private housing units, but in the next five years, there will just be one hundred thousand public housing units. So that's a shortfall, forty thousand units. Say each year, there are twenty thousand uh P R H units for those on the waiting list. That means there's a shortfall of some forty thousand units. And the waiting time will be pushed back by how long? Nineteen months. Under secretary. Another delay of nineteen months. Now, land eh eh is in short supply in Hong Kong and housing. Uh is um biggest headache for the people of Hong Kong. So when it comes to um distributing resources, the government must pay particular attention. To ensure that it's fair and equitable uh in terms of distribution of resources. Now, since the government's already set um ratio between public and private housing under the Long Term Housing Strategy. Now, since there is a shortfall of uh public housing units, then what do we do? Because then for po- private housing units, they've reached their target. In fact, they have outperformed the target. So why is that the case? The government could not um turn some of the private size for the construction of public housing. Now, if, but as those um eh eh who need the most help are the low income. Um people staying in subdivided flats. Uh some academics are ju- uh estimate that to be one hundred sixty thousand households. So. Getting public housing must be the way for them to improve their standard of living. So I would like to take this opportunity again to remind the government. That you could take the following measures to offer relief here. First, of course, is to increase land supply. Now, with the figures I've quoted, uh it seems that in the next five years, this is not possible. But at least the government must not um take away land from a public housing program. Now, all of a sudden, the uh Secretary for Transport Houses say that there will be um sixty six. T to seventy thousand greenhouse um subs- subsidy ski scheme units that will be given to. Uh that 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 will be um uh provided out of the stock for public housing units. Now, that's a. Um really um scared people. Now, we're talking about a delay of six months. If the government does that, it's not forty four days as the secretary has pointed out. How did they work out a figure of a delay of just forty four days on the waiting list? I just don't get it. And also, when the um pilot G H S. Was launched, the then Secretary for Transport Housing, Anthony Zheng, said that uh. G H S is a form of subsidized uh public housing, so it's counter towards subsidized pub- public housing. And we hope Frank Chang Wong will be playing with numbers and they won't mislead us um. And mess up the uh public housing supply timeframe. Now, for those waiting for more than three years of waiting list and who are now renting in the private market. We have also suggested the government to offer them a rent assistance. We have plenty of resources now. The government is more than able to afford that. But the government just wouldn't take heed of our suggestion. Apart from uh rent assistance, I hope the government will also take on board another suggestion of the D A B. That is for H O S owners who haven't paid the uh market land premium. They will rent out their units to social enterprises and N G Os for uh. Uh renting out to um families in need. Uh we understand the chief executive has taken on board our suggestion. But it's only limited to um units of the housing society. Now, there are about fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand housing units under the housing so- society for which a premium has not been paid. But uh so a few thousand units may be available for uh the rent private renter market. Now, if uh there are, if the Housing Authority would do the same, because there are two hundred and fifty thousand units with premium not paid up yet. And that definitely could provide um more supply of um low rent housing units. In the private rental market. Now, for the hundred odd thousand grassroots households, many of them are not even eligible for public housing. At the same time, they could not afford to private house, to buy private housing, so they need the help of the government as well. With high rentals these day, they all, they are suffering. They're just hoping that every year, the Housing Authority or the uh 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 will launch um. This lucky draw of H O S units once or twice a year for such a medium to low income households. The government should enhance the uh H O S subscription arrangement. There should be online subscription. Housing Society is doing it already, so how come the Housing Authority couldn't do it? Well, the Housing Authority is slow to react, but at least it's better late than never. Now, after I have um queried the the secretary. And uh the housing of, they 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 they, he said he would follow on there. I hope the Housing Authority will soon allow online subscription. And move with the times. And also, you, the government must review the um selling price of H O S units. It should be delaying from market rate, shouldn't be set at seventy percent of market rent. Instead, government should have regarded affordability of applicants. There's another measure is to provide um rent deduction, uh tax deductions for rental expenses. The I, the F S has uh um heard our views. It seems that he say he's looking into. The operational arrangements such as the um um adaptation of computer program and so on. I hope it will soon be come. Um the policy. Now, I have told the government on many occasions at Lashco. When I uh or when I meet with officials, something that that I have to say again today, that is um. There must be for for um the, you must extend the East Calun lines as soon as possible because Kun Tong line is already overcrowded. So we hope the government will um um start the East Calun line construction as soon as possible. And also, you should take seize the opportunity of redevelopment of the Ka- Kun Tong Tang Center. The Y R A and others must consider, uh and the M T R C L must consider expanding the um platform. The train platforms, because otherwise you will miss the opportunity to do it. And for Wong Tai Seen residents, I also want to convey their views. Now, after the redevelopment of the um Holy Mother Hospital. Or our Lady of Mary Hospital, there is actually no more A and E. What service. Now, for um addressing housing problems, elderly welfare or district or community building. The government could do a lot more. It's a matter of whether the government will do it. They seem said there's a new fiscal philosophy, there's new confidence and so on. So uh Mister. Wilson All, you've already spent ten minutes on this. Yes, yes, I know, but I have to uh voice these views. I hope the government will take heed of. Public views and respond to their demands. So I speak.
Doctor Elizabeth Quod. Thank you, Madam Deputy. This year, the fiscal surplus is close to one hundred and fifty billion dollars. The public have high expectations of the budget. And then a new philosophy of this term of the government. But after the announcement of the budget, there's been a poor review. Some told me that the government doesn't know how to spend money. Their policies are not in keeping with the needs of the public. So we don't see how there is a new philosophy on the part of the government. Well, I wouldn't say there is nothing good about this budget at all. For example, it's investing heavily in promoting a diversified economy. Innovation technology, there's also um funds earmarked for improving markets, cultural facilities and so on. It's also for the first time that we hear applause from the middle class, because finally the government is taking care of the middle class. So the middle class are happy that this time round they get to sharing um the handouts. And we know there are five hundred million dollars set aside for uh people with rare diseases that require expensive medication. And so and also widening the tax ban, the government uh has finally done it. And there are also um. Increase, there's also increase in the elderly healthcare voucher amount and so on. These are all good measures, but how come? The people are still criticizing the budget so much. It's because many in the grassroots sector don't benefit from the budget. Uh for the low income uh groups and elderly between the age of sixteen sixty four, they don't. Think they are not getting anything out of the budget at all. Why is that the case? Now, the government has learned its lesson this time. I hope we should consider whether it's there's an institutional. Problem. The way the budget is, was formulated this time round, has it taken on board new philosophy? Or is it a a bottom-up approach or is it still a top-down approach? We see that very often policies are subject to the will of officials. Some government officials may don't, may not know what the public think. They just dream up something on their own and then. They put it on the queue and when these measures uh finally launched, maybe they no longer meet the needs of. The current needs of the people. So we do not change this um mechanism. Is it possible next year if we have even more surplus, you will still be criticized? Do you think we're the, we, do we think the government is acting too slowly in formulating policies and and using resources? Now, sometimes it takes some three, five or seven years to formulate a policy, but by the ti- so by the time the policy is actually rolled out, it's a way. Uh beha- uh behind the times. And the people also don't see what the government, what they actually get after the government has spent money on this side and the other. Could we see any improvement in our um standard of living, for instance? Are we using new technologies? For example, in Singapore, uh departments are now using big data for analysis. They can share the data with the public for discussion. They also have dashboards. For um government departments to see clearly what the indicators are. And then they set the 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 targets and indicators and they 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 would be able to measure their progress against these indicators. How come in Hong Kong we don't do it? It's not that we don't have the data in Hong Kong, we just can't make use of them. And we also talk about investing in innovation technology. We've been talking about it the past few years and then we went on the study visit to the Bay Area. And members suddenly realized, especially the pandemic critic camp members, they suddenly realized that. Bay Area cities um fast catching up with us, Hong Kong is actually lacking far behind. Why is that the case? Now, just now, Mister Charles Mark said we need to invest more. And then Mister Wu Chi Wei also said that Hong Kong is far behind. We need to retain our talents. We need to attract more talents to Hong Kong for our development and so on. But we have, without land, without policies, without resources. And when there's um endless filibustering, you know, it took more than three years of filibustering. Before we could set up the Innovation and Technology Bureau. Now, we say we want to invest in infrastructure at the Lockmar Chow Lu. Finally, you could, we could have a huge site for developing innovation and technology. But again, uh the project is subject to filibustering. So without the land, without resources, how do we retain talents? How can we have development? And then, of course, then we have to rely on land on the mainland. If we don't go to the Bay Area, how do we um manage our developments?
So just don't criticize the government. The government wants to do it. The question lies in whether the Leshco supports the government doing so. If you don't give your support, don't criticize the government. Now, for the IT infrastructure, the government is willing to spend an amount on it. We visited the Bay Area, uh we see how applications are made to good use. Uh for the traffic police big data is uh being used, real-time surveillance is being conducted. Now, uh people are, have been asking, how can we resolve the problem of parking? How can we have further development of uh e-payment? Now, on healthcare, we said that we are applying a lot of uh resources into healthcare services. Uh a lot of Hong Kong people said they want to um you, use a C M services, but then you are not investing into it. Uh and other regions are developing healthcare blockchains. Hong Kong hasn't started thinking about it yet in Bay Area. Uh maybe a fintech blockchain can be developed. Has the government started considering? We haven't heard anything. Some civil servants and some discipline services uh have proposed uh that they should be subsidized to uh. Buy our healthcare insurance. The government is not willing to consider it. The task force on land supply is looking at different land options. Is it creating a rift within society or is it trying to resolve problems? These are problems, questions on the minds of many. For civil service grade, because the G F S can't uh employ enough people. We hope that there is a a review on the civil service grade. We want to uh boost the morale of civil servants. But the government doesn't, isn't willing to do it. Now, it's it's said that it will start. Uh to uh study it. We spent over one billion dollars on people who abuse our non-reforming claim system. People are not convinced by what the government does. And then there is heavy traffic congestion in N T East. We can't get on the trains on the Lockmar Chow Line. And we don't see any government um investing into the infrastructure in trans- on the transport network in N T East. The Hong Kong people face a lot of difficulties in their lives. If the government is not spending money to help them resolve the problem, then they will think that the government doesn't know how to spend money. So the government is not addressing people's concerns or priorities. So I hope that in the next financial year, we'll see that the government adopt new thinking, new ways and new uh fiscal philosophy. To address uh people's topmost concerns and spent money to address the uh problems in the society. I so submit. Mister Michael Tian. Thank you, Madam Deputy. A budget is an most important document in a country or region. How much has been um collected, how to spend. It represents the economic situation of a coun- of a place. It also represents the value of that place. And whether there uh there is any a struc- uh structural problem and the revenue, how do you address it? This is so important. So no matter what policies you have, you need the money first. And if money uh is uh is uh is more than expected, then we should spend it where necessary. And then we have to think, why there is surplus year after year? And then we still have to think, maybe we will over- overspend in the future. So if we are going to overspend in the future, should we just let it be? Well, should the government just be looking at the current year or not for a budget? Um that, these are the problems to be answered and the Leshco should look at these uh questions as well. But in this year's budget, people are just concerned about one single thing, whether cash handouts uh will be given out. And the F S is very busy in do, working on that. And your efforts on other fronts have been totally disregarded. F S, I remember, I I I believe that you remember that I have reservations all along on the cash handouts. Why I haven't changed my stance? What is the problem with cash handout? And you know why? A lot of people who oppose cash handouts are clear about the reason. I gave the budget sixty-five marks, just above the um passing mark. And the points are deducted because the structural problems have not been addressed and the surplus is not better to the best use. I pre- I agree setting up a dedicated fund with the surplus put in there to uh address. Inter uh bureau policies and problems. And the return of the surplus of a one hundred billion dollars is uh is is good enough. So in fact, it means another source of recurrent spending. So I agree that the budget has taken care of the needs of all sides and I affirm your efforts. But you haven't handled the question of taxation and have, you haven't uh make the best use of surplus. So I'm just giving you a mark which is just above the passing mark and under pressure, you um decided to give cash handouts. Um, well, there are so many areas which need spending. There are so many problems yet to be worked on. There are three things that you should spend on. In particular, these are not, are not, no new areas. You, this, these are no difficult tasks at all. And recurrent spending is required. And it can also be funded from, from some dedicated fund, uh community nannies. While people may not be familiar with this term, many um double-income families approached me, said that. The um childcare services are not uh proper and it's quite um. Impossible for them to go to the childcare center to take the child back home after work. So I hope that you can perfect the after-school childcare system. It will take a long time because it straddles uh across different de- departments. So maybe you can expand on existing initiative. There is a great need for community nannies. Um people say, told me that they have to wait for three to four months before they can get a nanny. Well, and there is an extra reward for community nanny, uh eighteen to twenty dollars per hour. Um if you pay the nannies, uh pay for their transport cars. The nannies will um take the children from schools and um take them back home. And wait till the mom and dad return home at seven, eight P M. Then that would ease the parents' problems. I have um asked uh Mister Dr. Lot Chee Kwong. That volunteer program can be uh regularized and so that needs money. Second, it's uh for uh additional net teacher to be added to uh every kindergarten. I think the budget is uh not saying anything about uh English education in kindergartens and so on. Now, if you can show me evidence that net teachers are no good, then I'm convinced. But then you do have net teachers in primary schools. They, you said that they um teach in a new way. And they can provide a real learning language environment. So this is useful in primary school. So it should be useful in kindergartens as well. You have to provide the right uh language um for students to learn um English. And the most important um place where that should happen, it should be the kindergartens. Now, we are um regularizing the uh assistance for and have notes um by so, by giving out three hundred and fifty million dollars. They are not under C S S A, they are not under the safety net and they are live in uh private flags. And they cannot meet with the low-income uh working family uh allowance threshold. Well, the government says that we already have the low-income family um working family allowance and that the problem ha- has been dealt with. But no, that that's not the case. Not everyone meets with the criteria. You know, we give them four thousand dollars per year. What about next year? The cash, the only purpose of the cash handout is to win applause from the public, but people are still angry. Well, you don't get applause and then you are losing grounds. I think it's a lose-lose budget. You should learn a lesson. Well, um you'll have to pay heed to public views, but you must have the courage to insist on important principles and values. And then you try to fine-tune your pilot measures based on certain opinions. So based on the above reasons. Um I can't support this budget. And as to whether I would vote against or abstain from uh voting when it comes to the voting. Well, I have raised three specific requests and uh these are the requests made by my electors. And I would uh vote. Um, I would decide on how to vote depending on the F S's final response. Mister Yuki Yun.
Madam Deputy, on this year's budget, I will um. Cover two parts. First is about public finance policies and then second is about education. For public finance policies. Other is this a big problem, or is a heavy problem? Is uh, we have a big surplus because of the uh vibrant property and stock market in eighteen nineteen. We have a fiscal surplus of hundred and thirty-eight billion dollars and the uh reserve. Will uh amount to over one thousand billion dollars. It's an enormous amount unprecedented. So we come to this debate on how do best to spend the money. The first question is. Um, does a surplus only come uh once in a while? Uh so this is a, a win-for, I would say. So it's quite difficult for us to uh plan properly for this and increase recurrent spending. But then, when we look at the overall situation, what with this win-for surplus, well, actually, it comes with good reasons. Actually, every year, we have um a big surplus. So when we spend this, this amount. We must call, we must consider. Whether it's a recurrent or non-recurrent revenue. So if it is a non-recurrent uh revenue happening very frequently, then we can see it as a a recurrent revenue. The government saw it as a um revenue which is fluctuating all the time. So in that case, we can only uh give out goodies and um spend one-off. But then that approach means that we are wasting. Uh the resources that could have been uh plowed in for Hong Kong's long-term development. Uncertain income key uh means uh income from stamp duty, sale of land plots, et cetera. Well, the revenue can be uh very high. This year's is a hundred billion dollars. It used to be a dozens of billions of dollars. But this income takes up a huge percentage of our revenue. Now, in the past ten years. The budget showed that. Uh these uncertain income took up thirty, around thirty percent of the total revenue. Sometimes it gets higher, others lower, but on average, it's quite a stable source of income. And these are, this also comes from the society. In uh we have a stamp duty, um this is our revenue, uh people. Uh paying stamp duty when they are purchasing properties. So that's a kind of tax. And this comes from the people themselves. So how can we make the best use of the amounts? If you just casually uh give out um one-off cash handouts, giving out goodies, then you do it um. Once in a while, then that's all right. But if we. Spend it like that, that amount cannot be used to improve our daily lives, whether it's education, welfare. Um, we need to, we need to have recurrent spending. Since we have such an amount, large amount of uncertain income, we must uh. Use it in the best way. Um four to five years ago, some uh policy, community policy research centers. Have proposed the idea of a fiscal stabilization fund. The idea is that. Try to uh make the calculations of such a fund over a long term and we can. Estimate. That uh we can make certain projections. If the income is uh less than uh. Uh we would try to cover the shortfall with um um revenue, more revenue generated in other years. And that would be able to cover our recurrent spending. I think this is a very reasonable approach. And then later, I found that we don't necessarily have to set up a fund. It's just uh a a a an institution. But if we say uh make some long-term calculations, we have our over um one hundred billion dollars. And we try to spread it over um a longer period, then does it mean that we have an amount that we can use today to for our long-term development?
Next year, very likely, we are going to have another huge surplus. Several ten billion dollars of surplus. So the biggest question is how we can properly spend it. I don't want to have another debate year after year whether cash handouts should be given, whether sweeteners should be dished out. Instead, we should opt for long-term operation. And that should be a formula for that. So as to improve our spending. Education is one area. All along, I've emphasized that. It should be based on recurrent spending instead of one-off. Allocation on an unstable basis. If resources are not stable, it is very difficult for the education sector to improve. For example, we'll be forced to hire a lot of force, uh short-term co- te- contract teachers. The teachers may be tasked to do one thing one year and another thing and next year. They may need to switch schools. And if the teachers are changing posts too frequently, it will cost our education quality. And that is why we need a stable source of funding. Now, this year, everyone feels that we have a very good start. Because at the outset, the chief executive allocated five billion dollars to improve education. And five billion dollars of recurrent funding, uh recurrent spending. And the chief executive displayed much sincerity in hearing the views of the education sector. Unfortunately, despite the very good start. It is not sustainable. Out of the five billion dollars, only three point six billion dollars were spent, leaving a balance of one point four billion dollars. And then the government further announced another two billion dollars reserved, altogether three point four billion dollars for the education sector. It is a good deed, but so far, the government hasn't announced how the three point four billion dollars will. It is a good deed, but so far, the government hasn't announced how the three point four billion dollars will be spent. So there is no plan on how the three point four billion dollars will be spent. As of now, we have not heard about such a plan. Not even in the budget. And we can't help but wonder why. You set aside resources, but you don't know how to spend them. Because in other words, you'll be wasting three point four billion dollars this year. After approving the funding of five billion dollars, the government said that they're minded to work full steam, but then the money was just left idle. In the process, I haven't observed any consultation with the sector, and we are disappointed. And there are also disappointments regarding the education policy, such as the T S A. I think this is a major blunder. We don't see any, any philosophy regarding education policy. Well, for example, we have one social worker per school, which is a good policy. But then, instead of having a social worker, the government proposes a guidance teacher or a school counselor. And they are mutually exclusive. At present, we already have student-guidance teacher posts. Why must they be mutually exclusive? That there is a really great shortfall, the education sector's expectation. So regarding new education initiatives, I don't really see how they address the education sector's concerns. The major, major request from the education sector is, for example, improving the teacher-student class ratio. And there should also be more, more G M posts and also standard pay scale for kindergarten teachers. These requests are not responded to. And we are perplexed why, despite the huge reserve, the government refuses to heed our requests. And we find it, we find ourselves unable to support the budget. More importantly, there are a lot of one-off relief measures in the budget. For example, a fund for extracurricular activities and also funds coming under the Equality Education Fund for Schools. These are all one-off allocations. And teachers are left in dire straits. Finally, I'd like to make another point. Over the years, regarding our fiscal reserves, apart from the government's fiscal reserves, we also have various funds. For education, for example, we have some sixty billion dollars of money spent on various funds. And they are not directly spent on day-to-day teaching activities. You have five minutes left. Please focus on your argument on heads without amendment. I'm approaching the end of my speech, Madam Chair. I really hope that the Education Bureau can come up with good education policies. I also hope that the government can be more pragmatic so that the money can really reach the problem areas, so that the problems in the education sector can be resolved. Mr. Alvin Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the consultation session of this year's budget, the Civic Party advised the Financial Secretary that investment should be made to improve people's livelihood when we are well off. We need to save for rainy days and prepare for the future, and we also need to understand the plight of the poor and support them wherever we can. In terms of the budget, whilst we're sitting on a reserve of a hundred billion dollars, we should invest in the future. This year, we may be recording another record-high surplus. It is a happy problem, and yet, the government seems to be stuck in dealing with the money. And the government should really rethink. One of the focuses of this budget is whether to give cash handouts. The Civic Party would like to reiterate that, similar to returning wealth to the people, it's all about even distribution of wealth. In reality, however, we need, we need the civic power to take forward certain matters, such as universal pension and also residential care home for the elderly. I think we should invest in these areas, but unfortunately, these do not appear in this year's budget. Well, I can summarize our comment on this year's budget. It's out of touch with either the upper or lower echelon of society. It is not effective because the government doesn't understand people's plight and there is no fiscal philosophy, so to speak. About the new fiscal philosophy, it only exists in name. Nothing is spent on elderly services, youth poverty alleviation. Because these areas do require a lot of resources, but they are not, there are not sufficient resources. On the contrary, there are different projects. For example, one billion dollar to, one billion dollar funding for the Civic Committee to Promote Civic Education that emphasizes indoctrination. Well, last week, I followed the legislature's delegation to the Greater Bay Area for a visit. Of course, it is a staggering achievement that they have regarding innovation and technology. But what's more worrying is that in the coming ten years, what should be our talent admission policy be? I have this strong feeling about this example. A mainland government official sat next to me during a meeting and according to this government official, they are very eager to attract talents and they would spend three million dollars each to attract school principals, to operate schools there. Because they believe if they do well in education, they would be able to attract talents to work there along with the whole families in the mainland. On the other hand, what have we done in Hong Kong? In recent years, the Greater Bay Area, the various cities, Dongguan, Guangzhou, etc. have been very keen in competing, competing with us on talent retention. They're willing to spend so much money. On the other hand, we have business startups in Hong Kong, such as the drones company, but in the end, the manufacturing takes place in the mainland. So it's really alarming for us. We call them talents. And as talents, of course, they have global vision. Mainland is of course one option, as long as it is attractive. But as a forward-looking, visionary government, apart from seeing our talents go to the mainland, what else can we do to retain talents in Hong Kong? I hope that the Hong Kong S A L government and the Financial Secretary can place a stronger emphasis on this. At the same time, Madam Chair, finally, the government has placed more emphasis on the development of innovation and technology, such that we are deploying more resources, resources to catch up with others. We're lagging behind by twenty years. Ten billion dollars for the Loop Area, ten billion dollars for the Science and Innovation Park. But money is spent only on hardware, on infrastructure. I tried to Google the Science Park. Madam Chair, I don't know whether you can imagine. After the Science Park, what is the popular search keywords? It's actually the pay for the Science Park. Well, this is, I mean, the admission fee, the parking fees. And this is the public's perception of the Science Park. It's a holiday destination. And they go there for a visit and they care about parking instead. Of course, we are proud of our R and D results. It shows that we have innovation in Hong Kong. But are the policies really in line with the, with the public sentiment? Last year, in the policy address, the chief executive proposes a setting up of a one-billion-dollar fund to promote the use of I N T in elderly services. And then in the subsequent expo, a system was developed to help care homes in dispensing drugs so that the time needed can be shortened from ten to two hours. And this is done by a research company in Hong Kong. And it is also a system that has won an award presented by the government. I'm sure that the Secretary for I N T is also familiar with it. However, this system is contrary to the S W D's guidelines because of the dispensary procedure and that the drugs cannot be, the packaging of drugs cannot be opened in advance. And this is really an irony. For the I N T officials, what they need is to remove obstacles and facilitate the I N T sector. I hope that Dr. Yang can understand this. And on a broader scale, in order to retain talents, we need to enhance the livability of Hong Kong. We need to create a good living environment, and that, that depends on good investment from the government. However, we see blunder after blunder in this budget. We're missing out this opportunity and we feel disappointed. Finally, I emphasize on the reasons mentioned about the Civic Party will be voting against the budget. I so submit. Mr. Ho Kai Ming.